Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, October 27, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, James Misick. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 834. Resolution granting until Walnut Street properties their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 5505 Walnut Street. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 835. Resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interest, if any, into the following publicly owned properties in the 10th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, in the office of Allegheny County, located at the north side of Rosetta Street, west of North Pacific, and property located on the south side of Broad Street, between North Millvale Avenue and North Wine Biddle Street, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 836. Resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in 5th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, located on the south side of Anaheim Street, east of Camp Street, and 821 Shawnee Street, Council District Number 6. Bill Number 837. Resolution authorizing the URA of Pittsburgh to acquire all of the city's rights, title, and interests, if any, in and to the following publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward, City of Pittsburgh, designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, located on the west side of Joseph Street, between Regis Way and Thompson Street, and on the east side of Rapid Inn Way, between Regis Way and Thompson Street, respectively, Council District Number 9. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 838. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Dicky, McCamey, and Chakot for professional services in connection with the police litigation matter for an amount not to exceed $11,668.90. Bill Number 839. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle, P L L C, for professional legal services in connection with a police litigation matter for an amount not to exceed $6,985.17. Bill Number 840. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Thomas, Thomas, and Hafer, L L P, for professional legal services in connection with the police litigation matter for an amount not to exceed $5,448.22. Bill Number 841. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Tremba, Kenny, Greiner, and Kerr, L L C, for professional legal services in connection with the police litigation matter for an amount not to exceed $9,044.80. Bill Number 842. Resolution amending Resolution 737 of 2019, which authorized the Director of Finance to enter into an agreement with city source associates for groundskeeping and land maintenance services for properties owned by the three taxing bodies by exercising the right to renew for one year at an additional cost of $250,000. And Bill Number 843. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts by the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to accept a donation from the Ford Motor Company of 492,480 Ford face masks at an amount of $201,916.80 to be distributed to city employees. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 844. Resolution authorizing the Citizens Police Review Board to enter into an agreement or contracts with the Densus Group for professional services to assist the independent Citizens Police Review Board in its review of community police interactions during protests in Pittsburgh for the period May 30, 2020 through June 1, 2020. Said agreements or contracts shall not exceed $25,000 for 2020, subject to the annual allocation by City Council. Bill Number 846. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title 1, Administrative, Article 9, Human Resources, Chapter 197, Code of Conduct, 197.07, Offering, Soliciting, or Accepting Gifts to Define Procedures for the Presentation of Gifts to Public Officials by Foreign or Domestic Dignitaries. Council President Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 845. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Commission on Human Relations for James Hammond per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in 2018. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, October 27, 2020. Meeting announcements. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the Clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess.
Peter.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. And I will say today is, I believe, is the anniversary of the Tree of Life. And I'd like to give a moment of silence for everybody who was involved in that terrible tragedy. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. And our next order of business is proclamations, and we have several to be read into the record, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Gross, Strasburger, and members present Bill Number 847. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare that citizens and government officials of the City of Pittsburgh shall observe this week to enhance public awareness and commit to drafting and introducing legislation to prevent the Pittsburgh community from being further poisoned by lead in our built environments and support children to live to their full potential. Bill Number 848. Council President Kell Smith presents be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of October 2020 to be Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month in the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill Number 849. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 27, 2020 to be Shoolie's Pizza Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
You heard the proclamations, is there any discussion? Can we have a, oh, in favor?
Motion approved.
Sorry. Oh, in favor?
Hi.
Is there some discussion on the one, though, I thought there was? I probably should have called for a vote for that.
For the Lead Safe Week?
Yeah, I thought there was something for that.
We have some public comments, I think, that are here. And I, there's also a press release about it from a countywide coalition that's been so active on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Motion approved, all in favor, okay. The next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And Madam Clerk, do you want to?
Yes, our first speaker is Akuhana Hal Makina.
Thank you.
Greetings of peace, light, and love. My title is Akuhana Hal Makina, the Grand Inka of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I would like to honor and recognize the life that was lost in West Philadelphia, Walter Wallace Jr. And I would like to give him a moment of silence. Injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. Justice delayed is justice denied. This is not just a West Philadelphia problem. It is a national problem. It is the problem of the nation and is our problem to solve. The police are inflicting terror in our communities. Yet, you refuse to label them terrorists. How would you define the word insane? Well, for me, the word insane means to keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. It is time for drastic change in policing. Police reform is just mild. Police need an overhaul, a complete and utter overhaul. And it must happen now. We will not live in fear of allowing our children to go outside and allowing our men and our women to be disrespected in our own land. In the 60s, Marion Barry and other community leaders demanded real change and got real results. Citizens were riding around in patrol cars to ensure the safety and the conduct of public servants who are hired, merely hired, to do a job to protect and to serve. And somewhere along the lines, protecting and serving has taken a backseat in regards to so-called Black people, so-called African-Americans. And also in other history, historic moments, let's not forget these moments. Since we want to talk about massacres. East St. Louis in 1917. Arkansas massacre of 1919. Tulsa, Oklahoma, in 1921. And the list goes on. For being marginalized, criminalized, simply left out of the equation of equity, which equals justice, we need our liberties restored. We don't need business as usual to take precedence in our lands. Classism.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kotakibey.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Kotakibey is not available at the moment. And if the Council will allow me to speak onto the record.
We have the next speaker, please, Madam Clerk. Is that the, could you state your name? Are you registered?
I think that was the same young lady that just spoke.
No, you, it's three minutes, I apologize. But you can come again tomorrow. Madam Clerk, do you have the next speaker?
Yes, the next speaker is Shamon Puma.
Greetings, it is Shamon Puma, thank you. Greetings, peace, love, and light. As you pledge allegiance to the flag, remember that you also take an oath to uphold the Constitution, the highest law of these lands. Do not be hypocrites of your oath and do not be hypocrites of your obligations to the Aborigines as outlined in House Congress Resolution. You have a trust responsibility to uphold the most good faith with the Aborigines. Also, the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, as it relates to Indians not taxed. As you enjoy these liberties upon our land, many of us are suffering at the hands of your police. We are facing genocide and forced assimilation against constitutional and international rights that we have. Ill-conceived policies and depredations are being used against the Aborigines on our own lands. It has been recorded on video that I have been harassed by the Pittsburgh police, accosted, and they attempted to force assimilate me, admitting to using the color of law and waiving their qualified immunity, placing me in handcuffs to steal my automobile, even after admitting I had committed no crime. I implore the City Council and the Mayor's Office to open an investigation and to respond to this unjust action to correct this wrong, uphold and enforce the constitutional protections for the Aborigines, holding those accountable. I will follow up with a statement to all of you, including the Mayor's Office, for this must be corrected through proper training for your police officers and how to deal with the Aborigines upon our lands. We come in peace and all we seek is to have peace be restored to our people and to our lands, so everyone may live in peace. And the so-called Blacks and African-Americans cannot be treated as such. For we are treated even worse than they are on our own land, and we all know how they are treated. I yield, in likeeshalakaen, the light in me honors the light in you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Michelle Chakis.
Michelle?
Sorry, I was just unmuting.
Okay.
Good morning. I am Michelle Nakarati-Chakis, Executive Director of Women for Healthy Environment. We are a nonprofit that provides education, technical assistance, and advocacy on environmental exposures that impact public health. Our headquarters are located at 5877 Comer Street. In addition, I chair Lead Safe Allegheny, a countywide coalition that envisions a community in which all Allegheny County children and their families live in a lead-safe environment. Today, I would like to introduce you to Get the Lead Out Pittsburgh, a public awareness campaign designed to shine a light on lead poisoning in Allegheny County, help families who are impacted by lead poisoning, and enact changes to making our community safer. Over the last year, the campaign has raised awareness about the need for primary prevention strategies that address reducing lead exposures and ultimately, the number of children being lead poisoned each year. We are appreciative of the time that every single member of City Council took to sit down with us prior to the pandemic to discuss the issue of lead, its health impacts, its sources, and steps we can take as a community to addressing this public health crisis, especially at this moment when we are spending more time in our homes. I want to thank Councilperson O'Connor and Gross for co-hosting the recent Post Agenda Session on Lead, which brought national experts to our region to discuss lead, to Councilperson Gross for introducing this proclamation, Recognizing Lead Poisoning Prevention Week, and to the other members of council who expressed interest and support for this effort. I encourage you. Now is the time to act. We've heard this message reiterated through Women for Healthy Environment's community outreach and education or programming throughout the years. This past weekend, I was speaking with a woman whose daughter had to go through chelation at Children's Hospital in the mid-'80s due to lead poisoning. That daughter, now a mom herself, is working to get her child the resources and support that he needs due to his recent lead poisoning diagnosis. They live on the South Side. This is two generations of lead poisoning. I spoke with a mom following a Healthy Homes workshop who lived on the North Side. Her toddler was poisoned by lead, so she wanted to move. She wanted to escape the environmental harm impacting her child. She rented another home on the North Side several years later, only to find that her second child, also now a toddler, had been exposed to lead and had to get intervention services. A teacher of a kindergarten class in the eastern part of this city told me recently that the behaviors that she has seen in her daily in her classroom throughout the years have been linked to, those types of behaviors have been linked to lead exposure, and that she wouldn't be surprised if many of the students in her classroom had been exposed to lead. You see, lead knows no geographic boundaries. It affects children in each of the 90 neighborhoods of the city. I encourage and appreciative of the leadership and support that has been shown on this council to address this critical issue. And I look forward to working with each of you and the various city departments in the very near future. Thank you again for your time and for this proclamation.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Ashley Deemer.
Good morning and thank you for having me. My name is Ashley Deemer and I am the Deputy Director of Penn Environment, based in Squirrel Hill at 1831 Murray Avenue. Penn Environment is a statewide, people-powered, nonprofit environmental advocacy group, and we work to protect our air and water and public health. And we do this work on behalf of the more than 150,000 contributing members, volunteers, and online activists in Pennsylvania. And Penn Environment is a partner of the Get the Lead Out Campaign. I first want to thank City Council for your work today to highlight National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week. In addition to my role at Penn Environment and working with the Get the Lead Out Campaign, I have a five-year-old and the threat of lead poisoning is frankly never far from my mind. As you know, many families in Pittsburgh are impacted by this potent neurotoxin simply because of the homes and communities where we make our lives. Most homes in Pittsburgh were built before 1978, when lead was prevalent in paint and other building products. And even today, 40 years and beyond, after lead paint was banned, we're dealing with its legacy. Chipping and flaking paint contaminates the dust in our homes and the soil in our yards. And you can imagine that when a home or a building is demolished, it has the potential to spread lead dust throughout a community. Thankfully, the Allegheny County Health Department has taken the important step of testing every child for lead poisoning. And this not only helps us understand the scope of the problem, but it provides an important opportunity for parents and pediatricians to intervene, to identify and remedy the source of lead in a home or community, and to provide important interventions to help lead poison children learn, grow, and develop. Unfortunately, the data that we now have show that people face different risks depending on income and race. In 2018, more than 20,000 kids in Allegheny County were tested for lead poisoning. Among kids of color, 4.53% tested positive for lead poisoning. And among white kids, 1.19% were lead poisoned. So children of color were found to be lead poisoned 3.8 times more often than white children. Lead can have profound and lifelong impacts for kids who are poisoned, and even low doses of lead over time can have big impacts on learning, development, and behavior. So testing is good and important, but if we truly want equity for all kids and families in Pittsburgh, we really need to prevent lead poisoning in the first place. And that's why we're so thankful to see councils supporting this proclamation today, highlighting Lead Poisoning Prevention Week. And we look forward to working with council on solutions that can reduce lead in our homes and our communities, so fewer families know the heartbreak and the real challenges of seeing their kiddo test positive for lead poisoning. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Taylor Musil.
Thank you, good morning all, and thank you for having us here. I'm Taylor Musil, I'm Health Policy Coordinator with Women for Healthy Environment, and we are also a member of the Get the Lead Out Campaign. So like Ashley and Michelle have both said before me, we test children right now for blood, for lead in their blood, and that the primary focus of our work should be to get ahead of that and to focus on prevention and the pathways of exposure to lead. And so, lead, as I'm sure many of you know, is found in our paint, our household dust, our soil, and our drinking water. And it enters our bodies through ingestion or inhalation. And in children's bodies, likely do, and through hand-to-mouth behavior, when children are doing what they're encouraged to do, and that's explore their world. And the primary pathways to lead exposure include the following. And so first is spending time in our homes, the place that should be safe for us, right? And so deteriorating paint and dust on friction surfaces such as windows, doors, and floors built in homes, or in homes built before 1978, contain lead. And our water service lines and plumbing fixtures can contain lead, as we know. And while water can be a pathway of exposure for any of us, a report published by Healthy Babies Bright Futures just last week stated that bottle-fed infants drink up to 10 times more water than adults according to their body weight and get 10 times the lead dose as a result. And so focusing on the health of children is really critical here. In addition to these two hazards, soil hazards are also found outside our homes and tracked inside by our shoes and also can be found on food that we pull from gardens that we might be cultivating just outside of our homes. And that's, you know, left from a legacy of leaded gasoline, industrial point sources like lead smelters, and the deterioration and demolition of older buildings nearby. Repairs, renovations, and painting work that we're doing on our homes can also result in spreading hazardous dust and paint chips. And then, of course, demolitions and tearing down pre-1978 buildings can result in dust hazards that spread through the air and become airborne, risking inhalation and can settle on nearby porches, yards, and other surfaces as far as 400 feet. And lastly, drinking water is another pathway. And this is a pathway that we are familiar with, and we commend PWSA for the progress that they've made in reducing the level of lead in our water and committing to replacing our lead service lines and particularly committing to conducting full lead service line replacements and avoiding those partial lead service lines that can actually result in a spike in the lead level than if you were to just leave it alone. And so partial is replacing, not from the service line all the way to your faucet, but only halfway there. And lastly, it's really important to point out that our system is identifying lead hazards by relying on children as our canaries in the coal mine. We wait until children have confirmed cases of lead poisoning or elevated.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Kevin Quisenberry.
Hi, good morning and thank you for having us today. My name is Kevin Quisenberry. I am an attorney with the Community Justice Project, which is one of the legal aid programs within the Pennsylvania Legal Aid Network. And I'm here in our Pittsburgh office. To pick up where Taylor left off, we know the common sources of lead poisoning. The data is very clear. It's clear around the nation. It's clear in Allegheny County. The Health Department has shared the data and told us, you know, that lead paint in homes is the number-one source, the number-one cause of lead poisoning for children. You know, and in other spaces where children spend time and child-occupied facilities, they call them, childcare centers. There's a risk within school buildings. You know, but the other common pathways include lead in soil, as Taylor mentioned, and then lead in water. And so, you know, as City Council members, you may ask yourself, well, what can we do about this? And as we've discussed with each of you when you met with us, and thank you again for meeting with us. Municipalities around the nation have started to take actions to put policies into place to shift from this canary in the coal mine approach, where we wait for a kid to be poisoned and then react to lead poisoning, to a prevention approach, where we try to inspect and identify lead hazards and prevent exposure to lead hazards in the home, you know, hazards in the soil and hazards in the water. For council, we really appreciate your willingness to look at this important issue and to, for the proclamation today, you know, to commit to taking steps, to drafting and introducing legislation. You know, as we've been discussing with you, there are cost-effective measures that have been put in place around the country that really are making strides in preventing lead poisoning. In the lead paint in your home space, you know, the common thing that municipalities are doing is to put into place an inspection protocol that's lead-specific, usually through their Bureau of Building Inspection, or if they have an occupancy permitting process or rental registration process through that process, where in addition to the normal inspection protocols that inspectors use, they add a lead-specific look for deteriorated paint surfaces and to do lead dust wipe sampling. It's an extremely cost-effective measure, you know, that municipalities are putting into place and employing. Rochester, New York is the model on that. And a Pittsburgh lead safety law, you know, could include that kind of step as a cost-effective measure to identify lead hazards in rental homes built before nineteen seventy-eight, and then trigger, you know, a responsibility to correct for those. And as Taylor mentioned, in the renovation and repainting world, when you disturb surfaces that contain lead paint, that's when the dust flows and settles in the house and the kids crawl through it, you know? And so we have good federal law and policy in place on paper to deal with that problem. But the EPA is incapable of enforcing and implementing those rules around the nation, which is why municipalities around the country, you know, have stepped into the void in that space. And that's something that would be simple and cost-effective that the city could do here.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Our last speaker is Joy Bronstein.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, members of council, staff, and clerk. I'm Joy Bronstein. I'm with the Clean Water Action and Clean Water Fund. And I've been working with my colleagues at the Get the Lead Out campaign for some time now. Like them, and some of them, I have small children in my home as well. And I have a neighbor even living in Squirrel Hill, where I reside, whose child has suffered lead poisoning. So this is near and dear to me as well. For the last year, this campaign has been working to get the city of council to take action on lead and to stop lead poisoning. Now is the time to do this, as my colleagues have stated. We've worked to engage and educate the community, and the reaction of the citizens and organizations that we've spoken to make it very clear that we all demand swift action. Lead is a problem in Pittsburgh, but we are Pittsburgh, and Pittsburgh comes together to solve problems, which is something that city council can do now. Ten days ago, we put out a letter to collect signatories. That letter is addressed to you all, city council, and it asks for the passage of the Pittsburgh Lead Safety Law and funding for its implementation in the twenty-twenty-one budget. In just the ten days, we've collected signatures from over two hundred individuals and organizations, individuals that represent each of your districts, none of those districts are left out, and organizations that represent literally thousands of other people citywide. That letter is staying open for signatory, and we know that we will collect hundreds of more signatures. Those organizations are as diverse as the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, Lawrenceville United, and the Hill District Consensus Group, to name just a few of the organizations that have signed on. As I mentioned, they represent thousands of people across the city. We know that all of these people are expecting you, the city council of Pittsburgh, and expecting us, those of us working on this campaign, to make sure that we solve this problem. After all, none of us, not a single person sitting here, can say that we want to see another child poisoned with lead. So thank you for doing the right thing and leading us on this. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you. No further speakers, Madam Clerk?
Please.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which will be the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
I have one.
I'm sorry. I do. Sorry about that.
I apologize, Councilwoman Gross. Councilman Coghill?
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number Eight Thirty-four, Resolution Granting unto Walnut Street Properties, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new project inside at fifty-five oh five Walnut Street in the seventh ward, eighth council district.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Eight Thirty-five, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, into the following publicly-owned properties in the tenth ward of the city, designated in the D registry of Allegheny County as block fifty G lot sixty, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and seventy, located on the north side of Rosetta Street, west of North Pacific, and block fifty K lots one seventy-two and seventy-three, located on the south side of Broad Street, between North Midvale Avenue and North Wine Biddle Street, council district number nine. Bill Number Eight Thirty-six, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, into the following publicly-owned properties in the fifth ward of the city, designated in the D registry office of Allegheny County as block twenty-seven B lots two hundred and three fifty-two, located on the south side of Anaheim Street, east of Camp Street, and at eight twenty-one Shawnee Street, council district number six. Bill Number Eight Thirty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the U.R.A. to Acquire all the city's right, title, and interest, if any, into the following publicly-owned properties in the twelfth ward of the city, designated in the D registry office of Allegheny County as blocks one twenty-four K lots one twenty-three and twenty-four, located on the west side of Joseph Street, between Regis Way and Thompson Street, and on the east side of Rapidon Way, between Regis Way and the Thompson Street, respectively, council district number nine.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thanks, Madam President.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number Eight Forty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Citizen Police Review Board to Enter Into an Agreement with the Dentist Group for Professional Services to Assist the Independent Citizen Police Review Board in its review of community police interactions during protests at Pittsburgh for the period May thirtieth, twenty twenty, through June first, twenty twenty. Said agreement shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for twenty twenty, subject to the annual allocation by the city council.
Thank you. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Eight Thirty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Dicky McCamey and Keel Coe for Professional Legal Services in Connection with a Police Litigation Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Bill Number Eight Thirty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman Thomas and Battle for Professional Legal Services in Connection with Police Litigation Matters for an Amount Not to Exceed six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Bill Number Eight Forty, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Thomas, Thomas, and Heffner, Professional Legal Services in Connection with Police Litigation Matters in an Amount Not to Exceed five thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Bill Number Eight Forty-one, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Tremba, Kenny, and Grinder, and Kerr for Professional Legal Services in Connection with Police Litigation for an Amount Not to Exceed nine thousand, forty-four dollars and eighty cents. Bill Number Eight Forty-two, Resolution, Amending Resolution Seven Thirty-seven of twenty nineteen, which authorized the Director of Finance to enter into an agreement with city source associates for groundskeeping and land maintenance services for properties owned by the three taxing bodies by exercising the right to renew for one year and an additional cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number Eight Forty-three, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter Two Ten of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget, to Accept a Donation from the Ford Motor Company of four ninety-two for eighty-four face mass value at two hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty cents to be distributed to city employees.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number Eight Forty-six, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title One, Administrative Article Eleven, Human Resources, Chapter One Ninety-seven, Code of Conduct, One Ninety-seven Oh Seven, Offering, Soliciting, or Accepting Gifts to Define Procedures for the Presentations of Gifts to the Public Officials by Foreign or Domestic Dignitaries.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No, no papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
And myself, I have a Chair of Hearings. I have one Communications for Acting Pay, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kel Smith presents Bill Number Eight Forty-five, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on Behalf of the Commission on Human Relations for James Hammond, Per the Acting Pay Policy Revised in June twenty eighteen.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
Make the motion in second. Thank you, Councilwoman Kraus. Thank you, Councilwoman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
There's opposed? extension? No, it's approved. Now we'll move on to unfinished business before council. Anything before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is Reports of Committee for Final Action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Eight Thirty, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for October twenty-first, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Seven Fifteen, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in the Total Sum of forty thousand dollars in favor of Deborah Terziak as final settlement related to the action filed in the Western District Court of Pennsylvania. Bill Number Seven Ninety-five, Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim De conveying all of the city's right, title, and interest into the city-owned property located in the first ward of the city at six sixty-one First Avenue and seven hundred Second Avenue, designated in the D registry office of Allegheny County as block two P lot one ten and block two E lot one twenty, respectively, to the U.R.A. Bill Number Seven Ninety-six, Resolution, Amending Resolution Five Fifty-seven of twenty sixteen to Remove Certain Properties Designated as Lot and Blocks Two P one ten and Two P one twenty from the Transaction and Corporation Agreement Authorized Darian. Bill Number Seven Ninety-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Murphy and Krkowsky as Attorneys for their Client in the Amount of thirty-one thousand dollars relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Litigation Filled in the Allegheny County Court of Common Peace against the City. Bill Number Seven Ninety-eight, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Ninety-seven, Effective December twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, which authorized, uh, resolution adopting and approving the twenty-eighteen capital budget and the twenty-eighteen CDVG program and the twenty-eighteen through twenty-twenty-three capital improvement program by reducing facility improvements, city facilities, by two hundred and sixty thousand dollars and increasing remediation of condemned buildings by two hundred and sixty thousand. Bill Number Seven Ninety-nine, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Properties acquired by the City at Tax Sales, Item A through G, five Vincent, three twenty-nine Industry, three thirty-four East Warrington, eight oh seven Cubicle, Old Lovelace, Old Oxfield, and two twenty-three Alice. Bill Number Eight Hundred, Resolution Providing for the Conveyance by the City of Certain Property Having Been Placed for Sale to Adjurning Property Owners in Conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh Side Yard Program, Items A through C, one twenty-six Metal, Zero Kill One, and ten seventeen Marina. Bill Number Eight Eight, Bill Number Eight Ten, Resolution Further Amending and Supplement in Resolution Number Eight Fifty-five of twenty eleven, Entitled Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twelve Capital Budget by Transferring a Total of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents of West War Memorial Capital Funding from District One Neighborhood Needs to City Planning.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, just briefly, if I may?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you very much. I just want to reiterate my comments from last Wednesday on Bill Seven Ninety-eight and send appreciation out to the administration, especially Chief of Staff Gilman, for assembling the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the remediation of condemned buildings. And I know how challenging it is. I know how hard he worked to put this pot of money together to help take down some of our worst structures. And I don't want it to go and say how much I appreciate his work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Seeing now the bill is not ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of what Iowa the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kel Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required numbers of votes are passed. Are finally passed. Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number Eight Thirty-one, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for October twenty-first, twenty twenty, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Eight Oh One, Resolution, Amending Resolution Six Fifty-four of twenty seventeen, which authorized the City to enter into an amended professional services agreement with humane animal rescue for professional services in connection with the detention, care, and/or the euthanasia of domesticated animals in order to extend the term until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and add three hundred thousand dollars in compensation as the City planned to soon develop an RFP for the forthcoming procurement of said services beyond twenty twenty-one. Bill Number Eight Oh Two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City into a professional services agreement with the Center for Emergency Medicine of Western Pennsylvania for the Provision of Medical Direction Services at an overall cost not to exceed thirty dollars. Said agreement shall commence on January first, twenty twenty-one, for a term of three years and expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Those in favor of what Iowa the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kel Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are passed. Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Intergovernmental Affairs. That's not right, is it?
Madam President.
You tried to merge us.
I'm reading my cheeks too.
Well, I caught it, though, okay? I'm sorry. You can use an economic development.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Eight Thirty-two, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for October twenty-first, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Six Forty-six, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title Eleven of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Structure, known as the John P. Robbins Civic Building, located at two hundred Ross Street Downtown in First Ward. Bill Number Six Eighty-two, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title Eleven of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Site, known as the Hardner Rosenburg House, located at four seventeen Lockhart Street in Deuce Town in the twenty-third ward. Bill Number Six Eighty-three, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title Eleven of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Site, known as the Spring Hill School, located at thirteen fifty-one Davis in Spring Hill, the twenty-fourth ward. Bill Number Eight Oh Three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Forty of twenty nineteen, effective December twenty-third, twenty nineteen, as amended, entitled resolution adopting and approving the twenty-twenty capital budget and the twenty-twenty CDVG grant program and the twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-five capital improvement program so as to identify- so as to identify specific projects in City Council District 148 and the Mayor's Office and authorize a subsequent agreement for operation, administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Yes.
I have not been keeping track. I am assuming, as, I don't know, I may have left early on the historic designation bills. I'm assuming that both of them have the owners' consent.
That's true.
Okay, I'm just making sure, you know, because I, I, I believe very strongly that, you know, my rural fear in historic designation is that you will have these carpetbaggers from outside the community coming into communities, especially communities of color, trying to, don't belong there, don't live there, but trying to designate structures at their pleasure, because they're more concerned about the pleasure of the past for them than the future of those communities. And so that's my, that's one of the reasons that you hear me being very careful about this, because that's my biggest fear, is that you'll have these outside people who don't live in these communities, especially communities of color, who will come in, nominate structures that they, you know, to penalize those communities and not give them a chance to be revitalized. And that's my, that's one of my fears, is it's used as a weapon. So I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what Iowa the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
No on 646 and aye on the others.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
On Bill 646, eyes eight, nose one. All other bills, eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Gross next. Yeah. Councilwoman Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 833, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for October 21st, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 709, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan for the 38th Street Mason Deville Townhomes Project.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of what Iowa the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now that moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 779 as it relates to an inter municipal liquor license transfer for the Cabaret LLC. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 11:30 this morning. That you have about another half hour. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 28th at 10:00 a.m., council will meet for the standing committee meetings. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office by 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. Also, tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 p.m., a cable cast public hearing is scheduled on Bill 684 as it relates to the institutional master plan for West End Hospital. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office by 11:30 tomorrow morning. You may also submit comments by emailing cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Please note that written comments will not be read during the meeting, but they will be shared with council members. Anything for members?
Madam President?
Council, Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you. Just last week, we got a report from the task force, the mayor's task force on public safety and policing. So I would just like, as Chair of Public Safety, I just want to call for a post agenda on that task force so that the individuals can come and present their findings to council.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I suppose, we'll schedule that with you, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Strasburger, did I see your hand?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to note, today is the two-year mark of the terrible events at the Tree of Life synagogue. Last year, Councilman O'Connor and I worked together to sponsor a proclamation that was a little unique in nature. It marked 10/27 as Repair Remember Together Day in perpetuity, not just for that day, that year, but in perpetuity. So today is to Repair Remember Together Day. I was a little bit late to council this morning because I stopped over at the synagogue and gathered, distanced with a few people to mark the, mark the time at 9:54 a.m. It's somber, but it felt good to gather with people. And, you know, I think it's just a reminder that we need to continue to practice radical love, empathy, lead with an open heart. We need to actively bridge build to overcome our differences and the barriers that separate us. And we need to recognize that the act of, this action that took place here two years ago was rooted in the same kind of hatred and bigotry and white supremacy that has resulted in violence against people throughout our nation. People of color, immigrants and refugees, people who practice different religions, people who of different genders and different orientations. So we need to be mindful of that and to eradicate that together, working together, and not allow our differences to divide us.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Can we have a motion to excuse the absent member? Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned. Thank you.